Good evening, everyone. I call to order the special board meeting of the Park Ridge Niles School District Board of Education District 64 for Thursday, April 1st, 1st, 2021. Carol, can you call roll, please?
Sotos.
Yes.
Here.
Here.
Pearl.
Here.
Riles.
Here.
Salas here. Little.
Here.
Sanchez.
Here.
Coram present.
Thank you. Larry, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Larry. I have no remarks this evening, other than I hope everyone had a great spring break. And going to move right to public comments on non-agenda items tonight. Each speaker is given three minutes to address the board. Comments may be made on almost any matter related to the operation of schools. Each person appearing before the board will be treated with courtesy and respect, and the board respects requests the same in return. In light of the privacy of personnel and student matters, commenters are strongly discouraged from speaking about individual staff or students during public comment. Commenters are instead encouraged to first raise such concerns privately with the board president or administration. The board, however, recognizes each commenter's First Amendment rights. Thus, it will not prohibit commenters from speaking about individual staff or students, subject to well-recognized exceptions under the First Amendment, such as obscenity, threats, fighting words, or incitements to violence. So with that, and I usually make my little pitch, and I'll do it right now, that as always, we, first of all, because of COVID-19, we felt that it's prudent to have this meeting remotely instead of in person, and we're following all guidelines set by the state. To that end, we have a designated person from the administration who is at Jefferson tonight, Dr. Frost. And we invite public, if they'd like to come in person to the meeting, to address the board, they can do so at Jefferson. Otherwise, they can do so via the email address that is on the district's website and submit questions that way, which we will take both as live during the agenda items, if it's on that particular agenda item, or we will take it now during public comment on non-agenda. So with that, Natasha, is there any, are there any questions that have come in on non-agenda items?
No, we have not received any emails.
Okay, thank you. And Dr. Frost, is there anyone in person?
No, there is no one in person.
Okay. All right, then I think we are moving on to the approval of the meeting agendas. Is there anyone on the board that has any changes, additions, deletions to the agendas presented tonight? Okay, and we're moving on to agenda item number one for us, and that's the Carpenter School Summer of 2021 Construction Project. So Luanne, it's all yours. You're on mute, Luanne. There you go.
Leanne, is Rick there, too?
Yes, he's here.
Okay, so he's at a microphone where he can answer questions.
Yes, he is. He's at the podium.
Okay, thank you. Rick's having computer problems, so we actually went to the meeting, so if you have questions. So back in December, we had talked to the board about finishing up the work at Carpenter this summer, you know, replacing the rest of the HVAC areas that were not addressed in the summer of 2018. We did go out to bid, and we received bids from 10 contractors. The lowest responsible bid was from Construction Solutions of Illinois in the amount of $1,421,223. I did include that our initial estimate was $1,898,390, so this represents a difference of 477,167. We had originally had in our original estimate to furnish air conditioning in the north gym, but when that was looked into, it was discovered that we already have it air-conditioned, so we won't need to do that. So that saves us money, and the flooring was in the initial estimate, and that was bid out separately. So that is included in that $1,898,390, and we'll be asking the board to take action on that tonight. The Studio GC did review with Construction Solutions the scope of the project and has made the recommendation that the contract be awarded to Construction Solutions. The prevailing wage premium paid on this work is approximately 9.6% of the project, or $136,437. And then related to the project, we will incur architectural and engineering fees at 7.5% and construction management at 2. Those fees total $135,016. Okay, any questions?
Any questions from the board? Sorry about that. I'm having a contact issue all of a sudden. I killed, I'm gonna kill video here just because I'm gonna take my contact out and not gross everybody out. So excuse me for a second, but any questions from the board on this?
Hey, Rick, you and I, you know, I had a conversation with you earlier, and I'm going to have to excuse myself from any discussion and the vote on this contract.
Yep, so Larry, Larry has a, I don't think it's necessarily a direct conflict of interest, but I would say a perceived one. And so I don't know, an abundance of caution, he's going to recuse himself from this conversation and the vote. And there's me without my contacts, how's that? So, sorry about that. And so any other questions from the board on this? I noticed, Luanne, that this is, in this case, I know sometimes we've had some bids over time that where we are legally obligated to take lowest responsible bidder. Sometimes, for some reason, the bid we're actually being asked to approve is not necessarily the lowest one, but there may be a quote "responsible" issue, you know, as to why we might not. But in this case, this was truly the lowest bid in addition to being the lowest responsible bid.
That is correct, and they have done work in our district before, so we are familiar with the contractor as a Studio GC.
I saw that they did a project for the Parker's Library recently, right, with Studio GC? That was just...
They are the, they're the architect for the, correct me if I'm wrong, Rick, they're the architect for the Park District, correct?
Yeah, that's the architect that did the pool, if I'm not mistaken.
Contractor is the same one, too, right? This Construction Solutions of Illinois, I think they did something minor, right, with the library, too?
They did, yes.
Yeah.
Rick, are these the guys that are out of Downers Grove? I think that's where, at least.
Alsip, right?
I think they're out of Alsip.
Okay, so that's not, then, Luanne, that's not the same one, because I was on the park board when we did the pool, and...
Oh, no, they didn't do the pool. They did the library remodel, Studio GC.
Oh, got it, got it, okay. Got it. They have a similar name, but it's not the same ones. All right, any other questions?
Is this, is this 200, is it about $200,000 less than what we thought last December?
When you add in the flooring, because the construction cost, Carol, was the 1.898, so it didn't include, and I hope I'm not misspeaking, it didn't include Rick's fee or Studio GC's fee, but when you add in the flooring, yes, that comes down.
All right, if there's no other questions from the board, I'll go out to the audience and see if there's any questions from the public. Natasha, anything that we've received in?
I have not received anything, no.
Okay, and Dr. Frost, I assume, still no one there?
No.
And Rick's not allowed to ask questions. He's not a member of the public. Okay, well, if that, if there's nothing else from the board, then we'll take a vote on this.
We need to do a motion first.
Oh, my God, you're right. That would help, wouldn't it? All right, let's take a motion on this.
Was this your April Fool's joke?
It was totally, yeah. I see, I like throwing Robert's rules out the window and just gonna do it without a motion.
I'll make the motion. I move that the Board of Education of Community Consolidated School District 64, Park Ridge, Niles, Illinois, award the bid for the Carpenter School Summer 2021 Construction Project to Construction Solutions of Illinois in the amount of $1,421,223.
Thanks, Denise. Thanks, Rebecca. There's a second from Rebecca. Denise made the motion. All right, last time around, any questions from the board, then? All right.
That we did do the asbestos abatement over spring break. The project was completed on time, and we're very happy with the work that was done. So that just, you know, helps us get ahead, and we thank the board for that.
Great. That's great news. All right, Carol, we're all ready.
Alice, yes. Biagi.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Riles. Present, right?
Yep.
Sanchez.
Yes.
Sotos.
Yes.
Pearl.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. I think maybe for the record, I don't know if the proper vote, Larry, if, don't, I'm not putting words in your mouth, but you're abstaining from that vote, correct? So it's not present, it's an abstain, it's an abstention.
Okay.
All right, Luanne, back to you again for the flooring project.
Okay, so this is the other half, is the flooring project. So we received bids from three contractors. We typically never have a lot of flooring contractors. The lowest responsible was from Michael Kautz Carpet and Design. This is $102,565. Our material costs are separate. They've already been ordered because of manufacturing issues. We actually have the flooring right now. We've received it. One of the colors we're using is being discontinued, so we wanted to make sure we had everything we needed, and we were ready to go. So the flooring materials were $43,613. The prevailing wage premium on this job again is 9.6%, so it's just under $10,000 for prevailing wage. And then we will again incur the architectural, engineering, and construction management fees for this project of $13,887. And then I just included that the total for the project is $146... What did I put there? I'm not sure what that means. Oh, the total A and E and CM fees, $146,178 for the project.
Yep. Luanne, do you recall when, when it was the board voted on the approval for the materials themselves?
We, 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 you're gonna take, I'm assuming it's kind of like you're taking action tonight, because we, you approved us going out to bid, so we went ahead and placed the order for them, because we were told it would, we probably wouldn't have them by this summer.
So, so, so are we going to approve it at a later meeting? Is that what you're saying?
We could bring it back, yeah, and have you just approved the flooring material.
Okay, so they were ordered, but you, they were ordered, and we have them in possession, but we haven't paid for them yet.
Correct.
Okay. All right, so, yeah, I guess, yeah, the, yeah, the board's got to vote on that at some point to approve that.
Okay, so I'll bring an action item back. It's probably too late for next week, but...
No, we can still get it on. Eric and I have, we just started looking at the, the proposed agenda for that meeting today, so we can add that in now.
For April 8th?
Yeah, yeah, right, we still have time, Eric. We just need 48 hours on that, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
All right, I'll write up just a really quick little report with an action item. And Natasha, just text me the item number. I'll get it done tonight.
Is that just, I don't mean to make a mountain out of a mole here, molehill, and I know we haven't made the agenda, the motion, so I promise we're gonna do that at some point here, but, so on that issue, though, did we have to go out to bid for the materials?
No, because it was, we, well, we bought the materials. We bought the materials ahead of time, but we didn't go out to bid for them.
I don't, how do we do that? I don't understand how we do that.
For construction material, for construction projects under $50,000, we don't have to go out to bid.
Okay, so because it came in under $50,000, we don't have, for the materials themselves, we don't have to go out to bid.
But the board needs to vote on it, because it's over the $25,000.
Got it. Okay, all right, understood. All right, why don't we take a motion on this, and then we can ask questions about the project itself?
I move that the Board of Education of Community Consolidated School District 64, Park Ridge, Niles, Illinois, award the bid for the Carpenter School Summer 2021 Flooring Project to Michael Kautz Carpets and Design in the amount of $102,565.
Thanks, Fred. Is there a second?
Second.
Thanks, Denise. Denise said the second, Fred had the motion. Any questions from the board on this? So the flooring, were we trying to match something that we already had? Is that why we were worried about the color?
Yeah, the field tile that we use, the white one, is being discontinued. So we wanted to be able to at least finish the halls in this building and the classrooms and our other buildings where we use that color. We did buy some additional field tile, you know, so we have it for, if there's issues. But what we'll have to do going into the classrooms is do some kind of a transition when you guys do the flooring, you know, so that it'll be close enough, but it's not right up against it.
Okay, that was my next question. Do we have extra in case there's?
Yes. Yeah, we keep, it's called attic stock, and I had Jason check, we didn't have very much. So we did order some, so that we do have attic stock going forward.
Okay. Any other questions from any board members? Okay, Natasha, anything from the public?
Nothing from the public.
Okay, and Dr. Frost, still no one? Okay, all right, if there's nothing else, we'll take a motion or take a vote. Good Lord, I am...
Riles.
I'll do that right now.
Yes.
Riles, yes. Okay, Salas, yes. Little.
Yes.
Sanchez.
Yes.
Pearl.
Yes.
Biagi.
Yes.
Sotos.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thanks. All right.
So, Rick, I'll put together a small report after the meeting tonight and shoot that over to Natasha to approve the purchase. I just want to make sure it's done right.
Yep, and we'll get that in the agenda for the eighth.
Okay.
Perfect. All right, our next agenda item is the E-Rate category projects, one and two. And I know this is a bit of a carryover from our last meeting, so MJ, you want to take it away?
Yep, thanks for your time tonight. I will be presenting the two more E-Rate projects for you to consider. But before I do, I will, would like to answer the question Denise asked during our last meeting and, and then bring the Y-Bot proposal forward, as since that was tabled at the last meeting. So Denise asked for further explanation on the Y-Bot subscription. So as I explained in the memo, the subscription is access to the whole system. So there are two parts to the Y-Bot system that are covered under the subscription. There's the actual sensors that sit on our network and the, and then the software that runs it, as well as collects the data. So as the sensors compile data over time, the network team will then analyze the data in the proprietary cloud-hosted software. So that's how the subscription works. The District 64 Network Team does plan to study and monitor and support our wireless infrastructure using this Y-Bot system over the next three years. They had planned that we would have an initial year of the subscription, and then they would have data over two-year, a two-year period to see what kind of issues they could detect or what kind of performance levels they would be able to analyze. So initially, it was thought to just get a year, but they had wanted to see the data over time and see how that would help in our support of it. And then we thought, if it was a five-year, that would just be, you know, going, going to a three-year as opposed to a five-year would just give us more flexibility in making any kind of adjustments that we might need to make after we learn more through the three years, the initial three-year subscription. And then per Y-Bots, the three-year subscription cost would remain the same after this term, so.
Do you want us to stop with questions now, or do you want to do your whole report first?
I think it'd be easier to go one at a time.
Okay.
So, any questions on the Y-Bot?
So Denise, I know you raised that issue, but several of us had, you know, sort of piggybacked on with you, but any, does that make sense to you now?
Yeah, I think that helps, just to understand the longer-term cost than the initial fee.
Yep.
Yeah, and I, I'll mention as well, like, retail for private companies, the Y-Bot sensors cost $6,000 each. So they give, they were giving education a discount of $25.50, and then we are able to E-Rate the purchase, the service.
So MJ, do you want us to take the motion on the Y-Bot equipment? And then we can, if there's more questions, we can ask that, you know, specifically. So why don't we do that? There's a motion, it's action item 21043.
All right, I move that the Board of Education of Community Consolidated School District 64, Park Ridge, Niles, Illinois, approve the additional network monitoring equipment in the amount of $15,360 to Y-Bot.
Second. Thanks, Denise had the motion, and Fred, the second. Are there now any questions for MJ on the, on the Y-Bot proposal? Okay, anything from the public? Natasha?
Nothing from the public.
And Dr. Frost, nobody came and stormed the Bastille since we last talked? Okay. All right, we'll take a vote on Y-Bot.
Little.
Yes.
Biagi.
Yes.
Sotos.
Yes.
Pearl.
Yes.
Salas, yes. Sanchez.
Yes.
Riles.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great, thanks.
Okay, yes, thank you.
Are you on?
Yeah, on to the, on to the district's switch infrastructure upgrade project. So our primary focus of this project, of the switch updates are to phase out the switches that have been discontinued, so they're no longer manufactured or sold, and that began in 2019. By June 2024, the current switches that we have will stop receiving security updates and support. So the switch update, update, upgrades, excuse me, began last summer in June, and the district is looking to continue to, to continue this gradual replacement plan. We submitted an RFP through the E-Rate process, and I've summarized the quotes received in your memo. We have GHA, a quote from GHA, a quote from CDW, and a quote from CMS. The GHA came in with the lowest quote, largely due to the third-party transceivers and cabling that they had proposed. The district does currently use a mix of Juniper and third-party transceivers and cabling with our Juniper switch infrastructure. So we really didn't have, you know, an issue with, and we, I'm sorry, we haven't had any issues with any compatibility or performance using third-party switch, third-party transceivers and cabling. So the district is recommending that we proceed with the GHA quote as it provides the best value for the district, while also meeting our needs in terms of performance. Does anyone have any questions?
Why don't we, why don't we take the motion on this one as well, too, and then we'll see if we have any questions?
I move that the Board of Education of Community Consolidated School District Park Ridge, Niles, Illinois, approve the continuation of the switch infrastructure update in the amount of $14,987.62 to GHA.
Second.
Larry, was that you on the second?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. Denise had the motion, then, and Larry, the second. Open it up to board for questions right now.
So MJ, the quotes on GHA seems like substantially less. Do you know why? Like, what's the reason there? I'm just curious.
Well, the reason why is they were lower on their support costs as well as using the third-party transceivers and cabling, so. And that's how they came in substantially less.
Yeah, I'm assuming you're still comfortable with the level of support we'll receive?
Yes.
MJ, to that question on, on your, on the, the chart that you've got, that CDW had, there was one-year support for 48P and three-year support for 24P. So am I to assume that GHA's quote was three-year on both?
Right.
Okay.
And, I mean, we didn't bother going back to CDW and saying, what's your three-year on the 48 port?
Right, because they were already six grand higher. Yep.
Right.
Yep. Okay, so the, so the, the transceivers and cabling are apples to apples. At least the...
In turn, yeah.
I mean, they're comparable in terms of what we're talking about, that part of it. And, and it's, then it just becomes the question of the ongoing support, you know, that they're offering, and whether or not that, you know, GH, as Dr. Olson just said, whether you're comfortable with GHA being able to provide the same level of support as CDW or CMS.
Yes, we are.
All right, any other questions from the board? All right, Natasha, anything from the public?
Nothing from the public.
Okay, and Dr. Frost, same? Okay, take a vote.
Sotos. Little.
Yes.
Sotos, yes.
Sanchez.
Yes.
Riles.
Yes.
Biagi.
Yes.
Pearl.
Yes.
Salas, yes. Motion carries.
Great, thanks.
Thank you. So the fourth E-Rate project is the expansion of our district's virtualization server environment. At present, the district deploys what's called the Scale Computing-Based Server Virtualization Environment. It's made by scale. Some functions are to minimize the downtime that might occur with some failover capabilities, provide safeguards against ransomware attacks, which has actually recently, during this whole pandemic season, really skyrocketed with a lot of districts getting under attack, and to efficiently manage our locally-run servers and services. So tonight, we're proposing an expansion of an additional node to this virtualization server environment through this E-Rate funding in order to run services such as our wireless controller software, our caching services, services for state testing, and general web caching, which has become really important in our increased digital classroom environment. The district obtained, obtained the following quotes for the additional scale computing node. So we received three quotes, one from GHA at $16,680, $16,680, CDW with $20,135.12, and MNJ $25,562. The district's gonna recommend, we do recommend that the purchase go to GHA in the amount of $16,680. And much of that price difference was for, was based on, again, the three-year support cost being substantially less. GHA seems to really want our business, so.
All right, why don't we take a motion? Oh, sorry, well, let's take a motion, Denise, and then we'll, in fact, wait, since you spoke, why don't you make the motion?
Oh, right.
You spoke first, I'm sorry.
All right, all right, I'm gonna do, this is, this is my, I think it's my third one, just counting. All right, I move that the Board of Education of Community Consolidated School District Park Ridge, Niles, approve the expansion of the virtual server environment in the amount of $16,680 to GHA.
Thanks, Denise. Is there a second?
Second.
Thanks, Rebecca. So Rebecca had the second, Denise had the motion. So I think you kind of, at least, I was gonna ask the same question that Denise asked again, I think MJ, you answered. I'm, I mean, it does seem surprising that the, that the service side of it is that significantly less on a, on a $14,000, you know, piece of equipment, but I guess it is what it is.
Yeah, we did check around to see, like, what other districts have used GHA and have had positive responses, so.
Okay.
Yeah, we were kind of wondering that, too, but I think they really wanted our business.
I mean, frankly, oh, sorry, go ahead, Denise.
We haven't used them before, correct?
Not yet, no.
Okay.
Well, and I was gonna say, frankly, that, that much of a price difference, if they were terrible in the first year, you could go out to bid for, you know, somebody else to service it for the remaining two years and still probably save money on the deal.
Yeah, exactly. And that's typically where different resellers can negotiate in terms of pricing, so pass, pass a lot of savings down to a customer if they so choose.
Are these, do you know, are these things typically map pricing, where, you know, they're not allowed to adjust the pricing in the equipment?
They have some wiggle room, but yeah, not, not too much, especially if you're just looking at one particular manufacturer.
Okay. All right, any other questions from the board? All right, Natasha or Dr. Frost, anything from the public?
Nothing from the public. No.
Okay.
Okay. Biagi?
Yes.
Riles?
Yes.
Sotos?
Yes.
Pearl?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Salas, yes. Sanchez?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great. Thanks Carol. All right. Thanks MJ. Okay, we're moving on to the final presentation and approval of the, the strategic plan. I know, Dr. Olson, you're going to lead that conversation. And just to tee it up, the, the board's, I think, now gone through it publicly twice, right, in two different board meetings. And this was, we, we asked you to bring this back to us in sort of final written form. And just again, to tee up, you know, why we're here doing this tonight, because I think we were prepared to vote on it at that meeting, again, whatever it was now, a month, six weeks ago, when you had brought it to the board. But because it, it was still sort of in, I would say, presentation mode instead of in a final document mode, the board had asked you to bring it back so that the board could just see sort of the final iteration of it. But again, not to put words in your mouth, but I assume you're going to say that it has not changed at all from what we saw in the last meeting.
Correct, correct. And so I wasn't going to do another full presentation again. I can obviously go into any level of detail that you want to on any piece. But really, we just wanted to bring it back, you know, in a format that the board could clearly understand everything before going ahead and voting. I think two things I just want to point out that is different about this style of a strategic plan compared to maybe others that you've seen, is some where they try to map everything out in the beginning, like at this goal, we're going to do this, and we're going to do this, and we're going to do this. But when you're trying to do that on everything, you're, you're really just making guesses as to what you're going to do in the future. And so we need to have enough of a framework and enough of a timeline, but those things are all going to develop over time. And then what typically happens is usually the board receives like a once-a-year update or twice-a-year update on the status of the plan, and they run over all the goals, and it's very short. But the idea here is that because there's 30 objectives, then we have to come to the board 30 times. And we have to present about that topic, and the board gets to focus just in on that topic, sees how the work went from beginning to end, and then decides whether, if it's a vote to approve it before moving forward. So I think that this style allows the board more accountability over the process to see, to ensure that what the goals are set are really going to be met at the end. And I think that you'll be able to see that. So while I'm saying it's done now, we're going to keep adding to it as each of these is addressed, and then we include all the information in there sort of as we go. Outside of that, were there any other questions that you had?
Why don't we take the motion that we've got to approve it, and then we can, we can dig in if there's anything specific we want to ask?
All right Denise, I'll do this one unless you're dying to. I move that the Board of Education of Community Consolidated School District 64, Park Ridge, Niles, Illinois, approve the 2021 to 26 District 64 Strategic Plan, including the new motto, mission and vision statements, and the five goals and their associated objectives.
Second.
Great. Rebecca had the motion and Denise had the second. Are there any questions from the board on this final iteration of it? Okay.
I just had a few comments. I'll go over them really quickly. I don't want to stay here any longer. Okay, page three, I would just add Nicole Whiteovich. She's on page 24, which is fine. Joseph Steinfeld's on page three. His name ends in PH, and then he should also be added to page 24. Another question was a couple of the committee members. They weren't, they believe they weren't invited back in January. I don't know what happened with that, if that was intentional or just an oversight. What else was there? Let's see. Page 12, Rebecca might know this better than I do. There's a split infinitive in the vision statement. I don't know, is that acceptable now in formal writing? I don't know. Rebecca, is it?
I think for a vision statement, it's, we go, what page did you say?
Let me see, 12. That's their vision statement. Or our vision statement, I should say. And then I had a question about the five-year facility plan. That's June 2021. That's pretty fast. So are we going to review that at our June 24 meeting?
So this is, I think actually we're a little ahead on schedule on that one. So we're going to bring that to the board in May. But, you know, we just thought it made sense to start with the new board and presenting from there.
Okay. And then I just had a small question about page 15. It mentioned build capacity and expand staff capacity. Maybe that's, let's see, hold on. Let me see what the context was really fast. Page 15. That was, I think, more of the differentiation goal area. Let's see. Okay, build capacity to ensure consistency across the district with MTSS, and then expand staff capacity. I didn't know, like, what did you really mean by build capacity and expand staff capacity? Did that mean training, or is that just generally, like, everything, training, hiring people, overhauling everything?
Sure. And that's more like, when I use the word expand, there is already enough in place, but we need to expand more on what we're doing. It could be either happening to a greater amount, or it'd be happening to a greater effect, or something like that, but it's already in place. When we say build, then that's more around the idea of, if some of this has to be created, that it doesn't currently exist, and that it needs to be to create more consistency across all of the schools. Because what often happens in districts of our size is districts, schools start drifting a little and doing some things on their own. And then once in a while, you need to correct that system again, and just ensure that everybody's on the right page. And I think we're at the point where we need to do that.
Okay. And then one final thing is page 17. You had that diversity goal. A few people have asked about that committee. I didn't know if you wanted to add the reference to that, or if that's still going to be in the works, working on that goal. I'm assuming it is.
Yes. So committee members are going to meet, or we have already, I don't know, Lori, have we reached out to them yet, or we're going to shortly?
Going to this week.
Okay, that's what I thought. And that, inviting them to start our whole process. So, you know, that will be, I can probably give the board a much bigger update on that at some point so that you have it.
Okay. So Rebecca, page 12, what do you think about that split infinitive in the vision statement? Is that fine? You're muted. Rebecca, you're muted if you're talking.
I am talking. I was looking at the PDF 12, and I was, I was on the wrong page. So wait, so tell me what you're talking, now I'm on the right page. What are you talking about?
So let's see, page 12, it's the vision statement. The last.
Oh. Yeah, I mean, for something like this, especially if it's supposed to be piffy, that's fine. I don't bump on that.
Okay. And then my other question about the January meeting, do you know what happened with those couple of board member, or a couple of committee members, or if it was more who weren't notified at the January meeting?
Yeah. So that's the first I'm hearing of it. So I'd really like to know, you know, if somebody felt like they weren't invited. Now, there were a couple of people that were invited to initially be on the committee, and when they said they couldn't make it for any of the meetings, you know, I didn't put them on. But, you know, outside of that, everybody that was there, the first part should have been invited the second time. We just took it right off the same list. So I'd like to know, you know, who those people are, because I'd like to reach out to them, because that was not purpose.
Yeah, one reached out to you also. He said he didn't get a response, but I'll follow up with you and just let you know about those.
Okay.
So nothing else, nothing else Carol?
No, that's it. Thanks.
Okay. So Dr. Olson, that, so you said that committee, the, the committee on diversity is, is set now? Those folks are set?
Yes.
Okay. Can you explain what you, what process you went through to select those folks on there?
Sure. It'd probably be a little easier if I had Lori do it. Lori, you just want to start kind of from the beginning with it.
Sure, for the strategic plan or for?
No, for the diversity.
Diversity committee, yeah. So for the diversity committee, we had, we actually started off by sending out information to everyone in the district. If you'd be interested in serving on this committee, please submit your name. And then we reached out to the contact that we're going to be working with to help us structure our committee work. And our contact, because we had an overwhelming number of people respond positively to the invitation. And our contact said, you know, it would probably be a good idea to put out a, a form that people can complete to share why they're interested in participating on the committee. And then you can kind of narrow down participants based on those responses. So we resent out that form and also clarified what the commitment would be. So the commitment is going to be eight meetings over the course of the next couple of years in the evenings. And we wanted people to know that before they sort of signed on the dotted line. So we sent out that information. We got some more feedback. And then we just looked at it and tried to balance participation among parents, staff, ages of students, background information from people. So we just tried to balance it that way.
Okay, so, yeah, so the definitions that we have, you know, on page 21 of anti-bias education and culturally inclusive, were those in place at the time that you selected those folks?
Those definitions are in place, and some people spoke to those things in their applications, and some people didn't. And, and, and there are people who spoke to those things on the application on the committee, and there are people who didn't on the committee as well.
Okay, but you're confident that the folks that are going to be on that committee are, are willing to adopt those definitions as this, if the board adopts this tonight, that?
Yes.
They too will adopt those definitions?
Yes.
In their entirety?
Yes. Well, and it's part of that is the conversation, too, that we have as a committee, right? So part of what we're doing as a committee is building our own education around those things. But I think Dr. Olson and I feel confident that everyone who was selected for the committee has a commitment to being a lead learner on that, right?
But yes, Rick, to your, to your question, yes.
Okay. Any other questions from the board on, on this as presented? Okay. Natasha, anything from the public?
Nothing from the public.
And Dr. Frost, anyone in person?
No.
Kido. All right, Carol.
Biagi?
Yes.
Pearl?
Yes.
Sotos?
Yes.
Salas, yes. Little?
Yes.
Sanchez?
Yes.
Riles?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great. Thank you. And thanks, Dr. Olson, and everyone on the team that put all the work into that. That was a lot of work that culminated tonight in that vote.
Thank you. Thank you. And thanks to Rebecca and Denise for being on the committee as well.
Okay, we're moving on to last big agenda item, which is the personnel report. Dr. Martin, anything you want to say about that before we take the motion and vote?
No.
Okay.
Any comments tonight?
Great. Then we'll take the motion on that.
I move that the Board of Education of Community Consolidated School District 64, Park Ridge, Niles, Illinois, approved the personnel report dated April 1st, 2021, including Resolution Number 1268, Honorable Dismissal of Teachers, noting that the personnel report is based on the recommendation of the superintendent and not upon the board's direct knowledge regarding any of the specific individuals selected for employment.
Thanks Denise. Thanks Rebecca. Rebecca had the second, and Denise had the motion. Any discussion on that report? Or questions for Dr. Martin?
This is something minor. You might want to just add Exhibit A1 to the resolution when, you know, in the posted version in the packet.
Thank you. Will do.
Any other questions from the board? Natasha or Dr. Frost, anything from the public?
Nothing from the public.
Okay, take a vote.
Sotos? Salas, yes.
Yes, Sotos, yes.
Riles?
Yes.
Pearl?
Yes.
Sanchez?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Motion carries. Did I, Biagi, Rick, did I?
You left me out. I'm not done yet, Carol. I've got another like three weeks. Come on.
My kids are talking in the background.
I'm a yes.
Okay. Motion carries. Thanks.
Great. Thanks. All right. Does board have any new business tonight? Okay. And we're not, Dr. Olson, you don't have a presentation or a summary at the end of this tonight, because you'll have one next week when we have our meeting on the 8th, and that will be a regular board meeting. The board is going to start at 6:30 as it stands right now for closed session, most likely, and regular board meeting for the public will be at 7:00 PM. It's scheduled to be at Washington in person for those. So the board will be meeting virtually, but for those who want to attend in public, they can do so at Washington next, next week. So with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
It's our second?
Second.
Thanks Fred. Carol, can we take a roll call?
Sanchez?
Yes.
Pearl?
Yes.
Biagi?
Yes.
Sotos?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Riles?
Yes.
Salas, yes. 7:47 PM, motion carries.